The Town of Farmington. Respecting history, planning the future.
Seven o'clock, we're starting our meeting. Generally start our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. And I didn't get a chance to ask Nick and Ivan if you can come to the podium and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hand over our please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The members of the council you see seated before you are all volunteering their time in support of the Town of Farmington. Putting in this countless time earns us nothing more than the right to be called Advocate, Leader, Councilman, or as I often hear, Cradle. I truly believe each one of us up here is coming to do what we believe is in the best interest of the town. We will not always agree on how to get there, and as such, we may analyze, scrutinize, or even on occasion, argue. What I trust you will see is respectful discourse during our deliberations. I thank you, the community, for putting your trust in us, and we will do our best to earn it over the next few years. With that, I'd like to call to order and ask for nominations for Acting Chair of the Town Council.
Like to nominate Peter Masfrotista?
Go ahead, the second.
Second.
Any other nominations? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Peter, congratulations.
Thank you, everyone, thank you.
Our next order of business is to adopt our rules of procedure. Every year we set some rules of procedures, there are slight modifications, and I am looking for a motion to adopt our rules of procedure.
Motion that the attached rules of procedure be adopted for the term of this Town Council effective January 14th, 2020.
Do I have a second?
Second.
As you can see in red, there's a few changes that were recommended for the rules of procedure. I don't know if there's any questions.
You ready on?
Yes. Just a couple of questions. So for A205-1, where we're striking out and the Acting Chair, my opinion is having the Acting Chair as part of the consultation with the Chair and the Town Manager in discussion of the minutes is just be more inclusive. Ultimately, the Chair decides what goes on the agenda regardless of what the Acting Chair's opinions are in that meeting, but I do think it's more inclusive keeping that in. And, you know, I would think about it in the sense that, you know, what if sometime in the future you have a Democrat who's the Chair and Republicans have the majority, wouldn't you guys want to have the Acting Chair have a voice and be part of those discussions?
Any other comments? I can address that. In the past, two years ago, we had actually added that and Acting Chair, and the situation that was just brought forward is exactly what happened. We had Democratic majority and the Republicans had the Chair. So the majority opted to include the Acting Chair in all those settings of the agendas for the meetings and another, a number of other items. What has happened in the past is it's often tough to get everyone together at one time for an issue, and if there was a time where I as the Chair were not here, that's when the Acting Chair, Peter, would be standing in for me. So it would just, in my opinion, and clearly depending on people who put together the charter, it's just sort of an added level and a bit onerous to have the Acting Chair showing up for all these items. So I appreciate your thought, and I think if that situation comes up again, when there's a majority here, they could certainly include that again in their rules of procedure, but my opinion is at this point, we're fine as we stand. Any other comments?
Oh, one more. And then just a comment for A205-3, a letter A, where we're saying now the Chair of the Town Council, who may also be referred to as Mayor, shall preside over the meetings of the Town Council. Kathy, do we have legal opinion from the Town Attorney as to whether this is permissible?
Yes.
It is, okay. And have they, did they voice any opinion as any unintended consequences that could result of this?
No, they did say that when the, when the charter was open, if that was something, that it should also be included in the charter, but the way it was written here, the Attorney did review the rules of procedure and said it was appropriate.
Just a question, does that mean that we're going to be calling you Mayor now? No. And to address that, both questions, what I had heard from a number of our previous Council Chair is in dealing with anyone outside of Farmington, they're a little confused as to what the term Acting Chair is. This change does nothing to add, modify, or abridge any of the authority of the Acting Chair. What it does is give the Town of Farmington a better voice when they go out and meet with others. I've already been at meetings where you sit around a table and someone will say, I'm the first elected in this town, I'm the Mayor of that town, and when you say, I'm the Town Council Chair, or before today, the Town Council Chair-elect, they kind of look at you sideways, wondering what that means, and then you spend the next 10 minutes explaining what that term means. That's exactly what I heard from seven of the previous Town Council Chairs who recommended that we do just this, which is why we put it in this file. Any other questions?
Just one last question. So just like a clarification from Kathy, so would unofficial documents, would we see Chair or would we see Mayor?
Chair.
We would still see Chair, okay.
Any other questions?
We would also see Chair on the ballot.
On the ballot as well?
Yes.
And campaign signs. Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
The whole council?
Care?
Aye.
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 Oh, yeah, I'm going to vote nay, because I was kind of concerned about that, sorry.
Okay, the ayes have it. The rules of procedure pass. Next order of business, we have a presentation for two Eagle Scouts this evening, and we'll be doing the first presentation with Nicholas. I had the honor of going to the Eagle Ring, Nicholas, you can step up, you voted. And it was a tremendous, Mike and Nico was there with me as well, it was a tremendous ceremony, we do a tremendous town, this is Troop 68 who brings forth, I believe it's the third highest number of Eagles in the state of Connecticut, so bringing these young men through this entire process is fantastic, showing for the entire community and particularly people of Connecticut.
Okay. Nick, we want to thank you for your volunteer work that's made a big difference in our community. By attaining Eagle Scout, you've developed leadership skills that will serve you well in the future. Nick is going to be going to our state's flagship university, UConn, where he'll be majoring in Economics and Finance, and between the excellent education Farmington schools provide and your leadership skills, we know that you'll excel, continue to excel, and we wish you all the best in your future endeavors.
Thank you.
And now for the proclamation. Whereas the Scouts BSA helps train the youth of our community with skills which serve them well in the future, and whereas many of our youth participate in activities of the Scouts BSA which benefit our community, and whereas one of the crowning achievements of scouting is the attainment of the rank of Eagle Scout, and whereas Nicholas Petroselli-Duncan from the Troop 68 Scouts BSA recently completed the requirements for Eagle Scout, and whereas Nicholas Petroselli-Duncan's project involved the beautification of the Farmington Alternative High School outdoor space, which includes, including, included building additional seating, stripping and refinishing the existing seating, building the benches and planters, and choosing trees and perennials to be planted in the space. And whereas Nicholas Petroselli-Duncan also worked hard coordinating a team to help build, refinish, and plant the new extended outdoor area for continued enjoyment by the students and staff. And whereas Nicholas Petroselli-Duncan has demonstrated leadership and academic success as part of Troop 68 Boy Scouts of America and volunteering at the House of Bread Soup Kitchen in Hartford. And whereas Nicholas Petroselli-Duncan attends Farmington High School in Farmington and is part of the varsity basketball team to win the Division III 2019 State Champions, is on the varsity crew team, and is part of the FHS Economics Team, and was selected for the Wind Ensemble Band. And whereas, as a result of Nicholas Petroselli-Duncan's work, the lives of the people of Farmington will be enriched and enhanced. Now therefore, be it resolved that on behalf of the Farmington Town Council, we hereby extend Nicholas Petroselli-Duncan our best wishes, and we hereby proclaim January 14th, 2020, as Nicholas Petroselli Duncan Day in Farmington, Connecticut. Dated at Farmington, Connecticut, this 12th day of January 2020, C.J. Thomas, Chair, Farmington Town Council. Congratulations.
Thank you.
We can have a photograph now.
Thank you.
All set?
Yes.
Thank you. Ivan, could you step forward a little? All right. So Ivan also is a college person, going to UConn correct?
First year?
Second. Second year. And I think we have to thank your father a little bit for all the work that you had to do, traveling to and from college campus. So not only is this his effort, but a community effort with his family. Whereas the Scouts BSA helps train the youth of our community with skills which serve them well in the future, and whereas many of our youth participate in activities with the Scouts BSA which benefit our community, and whereas one of the crowning achievements of scouting is the attainment of the rank of Eagle Scout, and whereas Ivan Petroka from Troop 68 Scouts BSA recently completed the requirements for Eagle Scout, and whereas Ivan Petroka's project involved renovating the Fisherman's Trail and Bridge. This project included clearing the trail, setting informational trail markers, rebuilding the main structure of the bridge, and clearing the opposing abutment of vegetation. And whereas Ivan Petroka also worked diligently with a team of volunteers to complete this project and for the continued enjoyment of Fisherman's Trail by the public for years to come. And whereas Ivan Petroka is also an accomplished musician, having played trombone in the Farmington High School Orchestra Band and Jazz Band, his playing earned him the Louis Armstrong Best Jazz Musician Award in his senior year of high school. And whereas Ivan Petroka is enrolled in the Engineering Program at the University of Connecticut and plays trombone in the marching band and prep band squads. And whereas the result of Ivan Petroka's work, the lives of the people of Farmington will be enriched and enhanced. Now therefore, be it resolved that on behalf of the Farmington Town Council, we hereby extend to Ivan Petroka our best wishes and hereby proclaim January 15th, 2020, as Ivan Petroka Day in Farmington, Connecticut. Dated at Farmington, Connecticut, 12th day of January 2020, C.J. Thomas, Town Council Chair. Thank you very much. Our proclamation is being tabled until June, so we're moving on to Superintendent of the Year. So I'm starting to wonder if Kathy's running out of room in her office to hang all these awards that she's getting, but, so I'll just start with the proclamation. Whereas Kathleen Greeter has served the Town of Farmington as the Superintendent of Schools since May 2009, and is a recognized educational leader in Connecticut, and whereas Kathleen Greeter has developed and enacted Farmington's clear visionary improvement design within the school district, placing Farmington at the forefront of innovation and excellence as a leading school district in Connecticut and beyond. And whereas Kathleen Greeter's leadership has resulted in the school district being designated as National P21 Exemplar District for innovative teaching, learning, and programming, and whereas Kathleen Greeter's collaborative work with the Board of Education, Administration, Faculty, Staff, Students, and Farmington Community has led to innovative improvement, practices, and programs aligned to Farmington's vision of the graduate, framework for teaching and learning, and core beliefs. And whereas Kathleen Greeter's excellent work has been recognized by her peers in the state of Connecticut, and she has received the district honor of being named Connecticut's 2019-2020 Superintendent of the Year. And whereas in addition to her dedication to the education of Farmington's youth, Kathleen Greeter has made significant and lasting contributions that have fostered strong relationships between the school district and the Town of Farmington. And whereas Kathleen Greeter's efforts to forge effective and solid relationships between the school district and the Town of Farmington have resulted in successful initiatives in the areas of school security, technology-integrated instruction, facility improvements, and joint efforts in the area of operations resulting in cost avoidance and efficiencies. Now therefore, the Farmington Town Council hereby commands Kathleen Greeter for her excellent work on behalf of the entire Farmington community, and we happily congratulate her on her 2019-2020 Superintendent of the Year Award. Dated at Farmington, Connecticut, this 14th day of January 2020, C.J. Thomas, Chair, Farmington And so it's a little bit fitting for me to be presenting Kathy for this proclamation tonight, because as most of you know, in December, I stepped down as Chair of the Farmington Board of Education and left the board in the capable hands of Ellen Saieda, which I know you do fine, Ellen. But it also provides me with one last public opportunity to remind Kathy that she won Superintendent of the Year during my tenure. So just want that to be known. So, you know, CJ asked me to do this, and I was, you know, absolutely more than pleased to be able to do this, and I just, on the condition, I was able to say a few comments about Kathy. And when I started to do this, I found myself in a trap, and it's kind of a trap that I'm familiar with, and I found myself in this not too long ago, shortly before Thanksgiving this past November. I was informed that Kathy was going to win Superintendent of the Year, and as Chair, I was tasked with coming up with a statement to be included in the press release that go along with the award. And so I figured, no problem, this is going to be easy, I can whip something up in five minutes talking about Kathy, everything she's done as an educator, everything she's done for Farmington. And then you realize, at a certain point in time, you've been tasked with the impossible, that there's no way a few sentences or a few paragraphs could capture everything that Kathy means to this town. So I persevered, I plowed ahead, and I came up with something, and I think I was successful, not in capturing the essence of Kathy Greeter, but successful in doing what anyone in my situation would have done, which is come up with something wholly inadequate for the situation. So I thought I'd share with you tonight, somebody probably seen it, might have read it, but the press, my portion of the press release and my statements about Kathy, when she won Superintendent of the Year. This is a wonderful day for the Farmington community, but most of all for Superintendent Greeter. This recognition not only pays tribute to her entire career as an educator, but also to her talent and vision as leader of our district, where our tangible results and student achievement are being noticed and valued throughout the state of Connecticut. Superintendent Greeter exemplifies professionalism, collaboration, relationship building, community engagement, inclusivity, and equity in education, and she is driven to ensure that all students in Farmington reach their full potential. Farmington is always refining and gaining insight to what we can do better, and for that to happen, we need a visionary leader to ensure that our evolution is both authentic and has lasting impact both today and in the future. Superintendent Greeter's vision, dedication to the students and families of the community, is unmatched, and she embodies the Board's aspiration and commitment to provide students with continuous opportunities for achieving academic excellence, developing meaningful relationships, and becoming future-ready. This award comes in an appropriate time of the year where Farmington can rightfully give thanks to Superintendent Greeter for all she does for the students and families of our community. So then in a reflective moment this weekend, when I was thinking about my time back on the Board of Ed, before I was coming, looking forward to the Town Council, it dawned on me that once I officially stepped down after our last meeting in December, that Kathy did not extend to me the professional courtesy of an exit interview. So I was figuring I'd take tonight for an airing of the grievances, which normally comes along with an exit interview.
I knew it would come.
So we begin in June of 2014. I was appointed to fill a vacancy on the Board of Education, and on a Monday morning in June, I dutifully show up in front of Paula Ryan in her office to be sworn in as a member of the Board of Education. Paula swears me in, sends me on my way, and my way is to abort me that night, no orientation, nothing. So I march off to Farmington High School that night, walk into the library, and I don't really have my legs underneath me because I don't know what I'm walking into. So I walk into the library, kind of work the room a little bit, introduce myself, walk around, and you may be familiar that we sit in a U shape sort of at the Board with the central office members and the Board members around, and I'm looking for a My Name Plate, and I look, and I'm looking, and I find it. And the, the just, the genius of Kathy Greeter was made abundantly clear at that moment in time, because I realized that she put me at the little kid's table, about as far away from her as she could possibly put.
I don't remember that.
But her genius was she also sat me next to Mike Ryan and Gene Barron. Now, for those of you that may not know Mike Ryan, he's our former business administrator, and he's just a brilliant, kind, kind man. Most of us do know Gene Barron, and Gene is a gentle soul. I kidded, when I was first on the Board, I called her my guardian angel, and she's just a kind gentle soul who has done nothing but dedicate countless hours in time and energy to the students and families of Farmington in a number of different capacities, including the Board of Education. So there I sat at the end of the table for two years, getting my legs back underneath me, under the watchful guidance of Gene and Mike. And I was glad we weren't broadcasting in meetings at that point in time really, because all the cameras would have captured was me leaning over to Gene and Mike and asking, what's Kathy talking about? So from there, we fast forward to 2016, and I become Chair, and I found myself again with no legs beneath me, in very unsettled waters, and, but this time, with becoming Chair, you get a promotion in your seating arrangements. Now I'm sitting at the big people table, and now we're broadcasting our meetings, and it's right online with a camera, but not fortuitously, but because it's required, my seat is right next to Kathy. And again, her, just her genius is exposed to me, and this time not because of seating arrangements, because I have to sit next to her, but because I realize I'm sitting with the smartest person in the room. And not only do I realize that, but I realize that she's not going to let me fail as Board Chair. And when I say the smartest person in the room, I don't mean the Farmington Board of Education room. I will take Kathy Greeter and go to any Board of Education meeting, anywhere in the state of Connecticut, and I know for a fact that I'm still going to have the smartest person in the room sitting next to me, hands down. So after three years, I got my legs underneath me again, and that's solely because of your mentorship, your guidance, your leadership, a lot of patience and tolerance, but most of all, your friendship, and I really want to thank you for that. So people ask me about my time on the Board and what's my greatest accomplishment, and I jokingly respond to them, I don't think I messed anything up. And I think I can get away with saying that because, you know, there's an element of truth to it, and it's because we don't have to radically change anything we're doing here in Farmington. That's already been done by Kathy. So I came into a great situation, we didn't have to change anything, and as I kind of said in my statement in the press release, we just have to thoughtfully and meaningfully evolve. And people may not say there's a difference between those two, but there's a significant, significant difference between changing and evolving. And I just think one of the great examples of this is, we are, I shouldn't say we, Kathy is contacted by leaders in other districts, who will ask her a couple of questions. What are you guys doing now? How are you doing it, and how do you do it so well? So Kathy, being Kathy, will gladly share her thoughts with them about our vision of the graduate, mastery-based learning, social and emotional learning, and equity in education. But she has to issue a caveat when she talks to these people, because the caveat is, what they want to do today, we've been doing for five or 10 years, and we've already evolved and moved on from what they're interested in doing today. So we should be grateful that we have such a visionary leader in Kathy Greeter who's in charge of our schools. So fast forward to November 5th, this Tuesday, November 5th this past year, and I get elected to the Town Council. So from that date forward to today, and probably for the reasonably foreseeable future, with a dose of Irish guilt that would make her mother blush with pride, the subtlety of a sledgehammer, Kathy has made it abundantly clear to me that she doesn't, she does not wish I was standing here tonight. But I want to tell you one thing, Kathy, I am standing here with my legs beneath me because of everything you've done for me, and I thank you for that. So as I go forward as a member of this Town Council, I have a goal, and I hope it's shared by all my fellow council members, and that is to approach our roles with the same passion, dedication, commitment, collaborative spirit, sense of humor, empathy, and humanity that you bring to your job every single day, because if we do that, we're going to be just fine. And one last thing, and it's a personal goal of mine, it's not going to be shared by the Town Council members, and that's to make you proud of me, because I know if I do that, I've done a good job up there. So congratulations on your, you know, long overdue, richly deserved honor. On behalf of the Town of Farmington, thank you for everything you do every day for the families and students of this town, and thank you for being a friend, my mentor, over the last season.
It's really hard to follow Chris. That was an amazing speech, and I can't thank you enough for being a partner on the Board of Education. I have been so lucky to have the Board members that I've had, I have, we've always been a team, we've always worked tirelessly for the children of Farmington. I feel so fortunate to not only be, not only be in the Superintendent of Farmington, but just being a part of this amazing community, where everyone works so hard together on behalf of the citizens. I'm also really honored to be recognized when Nick and Ivan are being recognized tonight, because that really, you, this is a great example of why we're all here. Two young men who have given so much already to the community and give us hope for the future. So it was very nice to be here to just witness their recognition. I want to thank the students... I, I want to thank the students, parents, families, faculty, staff, and administration here in Farmington. We have the most exemplary educators, students, parents, and I do believe it's all about the collaboration that we have. I think CJ said, you know, "We don't always agree on everything, but we really have the right priorities in mind when we do make decisions." And so I feel so fortunate to be a part of Farmington's legacy of excellence in education. I do want to thank the Town Council through the years. I'm usually here at the podium talking about budgets and what we need in the schools to continue that legacy, and I've always felt supported, I've always felt that everyone was listening and trying, again, to make the best decisions. Kathy, and Cap, and Erica at the Town, we all work together, Pamela Lanson, we all work together on behalf of the residents of Farmington. We're always looking for ways to partner and do things even better than what we're doing right now, and we do seem to have fun in the process, which makes the work a little easier. So I just, I thank everyone, you know, for this recognition, and this, I said, and I will continue to say, it is a Farmington recognition. It is because of all the things that Chris talked about, all the things that I, I've gone over. It's about all of us working together, and I think that's what makes Farmington so unique and so special. And just one last comment about Chris, it has just been a pleasure to work with Chris and work with the entire Board. Your words were so generous and so kind.
They were easy.
He really, he really has a lot to do with how well things went during his time as Chair. He understood, you know, that it was, it's important that the Superintendent has a role and the Board of Education and Chair have a role, and when we're in our roles, we do amazing things for children. So, thank you so much, and I'm thrilled to have this Farmington hat, which I've been wishing for for 10 years. So, thank you all so, so much, and, you know, congratulations to our Town Council, I look forward to working with you, and I know you need to get to your agenda, so.
Item D on our agenda is public hearing, we have none. Item E, you write it.
Yes, I'd like to add, we move Agenda L-26 for appointment to the bicycle advisory committee.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Item L-26. The next item is public comment. What we do with public comment is we listen to any of the community who wishes to speak. They have five minutes to speak. We will listen to what they say, we do not comment from the deus, but where appropriate, we will get back and comment either in written or oral form. That being said, is there any public comment? Please come to the podium, state your name and address, and make your comment.
Good evening. My name is Martin Gilson, I'm at 7P Quat Road in Plano, Connecticut. Is this a common start? I'm sorry, I'm hurrying this process.
Can I carry your address again, please?
It's 7P Quat Road, Farmington, oh, Plano, Connecticut.
Lift the mic.
That was better. Yes? Got it. Okay. Um, I just want, I'm sorry, I'm not much one who's trying to get the second now, get it right. My comment is, I'm trying to see what is the feasibility of modifying or revising or, I don't know what the inclusion is, to change a Town ordinance. The Town ordinance question is in 148-3, and there's a subsection D which talks, essentially the, the Town ordinance addresses public space, and the Town ordinance 148-8-3, Section D, talks about possession and discharge of firearms. And in it, it talks about any firearms, and I was wondering, is there a feasibility to either include or modify that to add the words unlawful firearms? I clarified this with the police department, and apparently at any point in town property where somebody has a license by a state permit to carry firearm, they're still not allowed to have a firearm on that property. And the property in specific is generally at Tungstus Mead. As you know, Tungstus Mead has a little network of trails, some of them bordered the fields and some of them go by the river, and at that point, you're pretty much secluded and far away, so if there is any kind of emergency that occurs to anybody that is traveling on that path, there really is no response to that. So, I'm trying to see if we can have a modification so that people that do have permits and are lawfully in possession of illegal firearm are able to do so without being violation of this Town ordinance.
Hi, good evening. Mike D'Amico, 6 Debra Lane. I will not take five minutes, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to add my voice to, to the voices that spoke earlier, to congratulate both Ivan and Nick on their achievement of, achieving the rank of Eagle Scout, and congratulate them and thank them for their contributions to the town. I also wanted to add my voice of congratulations to our Superintendent Kathy Greeter on her reward as Superintendent of the Year, and as I like to tell people, I'm glad that the state of Connecticut now knows what Farmington has known for a long time. We have the best Superintendent in Connecticut, and now it's been formally acknowledged. So, and then finally, I wanted to congratulate and thank all of you, both, both returning members of the Council and new members of the Council. It is a difficult job, but it's, it's a rewarding job, and I just want to thank you and congratulate you, and, 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 and you stole a little bit of my speech, Mr. Chair. You are not always going to agree. I can guarantee you that there will be many times when you disagree, but I am confident that you will not be disagreeable in the process of disagreeing. So, and, and with that in mind, I know that you'll do good work for the town and, and work cooperatively to move the town forward. So, congratulations and, and thank you for, for your service. And, just, I want you to know that I am always available, if I can be of any assistance to any of you in any way, you know how to get in touch with me, and happy to, happy to pitch in and, and help you out. Congrats again. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Seeing none. Do we move on to item G, reading of the minutes, December 10? Anyone have comments, questions, motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the December 10th, 2019 regular Town Council meeting events.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passed. Reading of communications in the written fields, having none. Report committees. The committee report for this evening for Farmington High School Building Committee.
Okay, you know, just for everybody, you know, in attendance and watching, I mean, we're really at a point of critical mass with the Building Committee, where the fruits of the labor of the competitive bidding process is underway. I'm starting to see the results of that, as evidenced and manifested last week in the presentation of the first option by both architects, Quiz and Baron and Taissu Kim. So I just want to mention some, you know, quick points with where we are going forward, and encourage, it was very encouraging last week to see the turnout we did receive at the meeting, so that it seems like we're getting a lot of attention and traction within the community as to this project, because it is a significant project and it's a community asset, not just for the school. So throughout the month of January, both architects are presenting their conceptual designs to the Building Committee. Option one, which is the maintain option, was presented last week. These presentations cost information and video of the meeting is posted on the Building Committee website, located at www.fhsbuildingproject.org. And, you know, just having sat through those presentations last week to see the differences in the two presentations was, was eye-opening. So I think it's, you know, very good that we're getting different takes on this, and I would just encourage everybody to take advantage of all the information that's out there, that's actually being presented to us. Option two, the renovation option, will be presented tomorrow, January 15th, at 6:30 PM in the Farmington High School Library. In response to, as I alluded to earlier, the attendance last week, the room's going to be reconfigured to accommodate a larger audience. In response to some feedback we received, XL will provide childcare for school-aged children in Room 901 at the high school from 6:15 to 9:30, and dialerway transportation will also be provided. Please call 860-675-2390 to reserve a spot. Option number three, the new building option, will be presented to the Building Committee on January 22nd at 6:30 PM in the Farmington High School Library. Once again, childcare through XL and transportation will be available for these meetings as Okay, and, next, a community meeting will be held on Saturday, January 25th, from 9 to 12 in the Farmington High School cafeteria. The conceptual designs will be on display, and community members are invited to view the options at their leisure. Tours of the facility will once again be offered at 9, 10, and 11 o'clock in the morning. After evaluating all the options, the Building Committee will make a recommendation at their January 29th meeting. The Committee will then report the options and present their recommendation to the Town Council on February 4th. And it is expected that the Town Council will recharge the Committee with an overall project scope and range of the net municipal costs. Yeah, what's moving? Uh, was it says, I mean, did they officially move it?
No, it's in the library.
It is, okay.
The upcoming meetings for the presentation of the options are in the high school library.
Okay. I know they were talking about moving, but they're going to reconfigure the room, so...
The last time we weren't prepared for almost 100 people there, so we came up with a better layout of the rooms so that there'll be more chairs and it'll be more accessible for everyone.
All right. Any questions? Report Council Chair and Liaisons, we have none this evening. Report the Town Manager.
You have the written report in front of you, I'll just go through it quickly, that we do have the budget schedule listed for your reference, nutmeg air dates, we are live, and also the, it's shown on Sundays, Fridays, and Saturdays. Mike, you're still in the audience, it's customary that we invite the legislators to our February meeting, so you'll be getting an email, so we usually ask our legislative group to come and give us an update about budget and state issues, so that's coming up in February. One of the things I wanted to make note of is that the Town of Farmington Fire Department's strategic plan, this is something that the Fire Department has been working on for the last five years, and it's, they are ready to be giving the Council a statement of needs. This will be something that we are going to talk about, I assume, during our strategic planning sessions, so I just wanted to kind of give a little briefing about it in the Manager's Report in advance of it. So, that's what that is. We have our Town Council photo shoot at our next meeting, January 28th, so please arrive at 6:30 PM, where we'll have our photo, which will then go on the back wall. And, I just wanted to just give an update about our community and recreational services, and just some of the things in the holiday programs and what goes on in that department, and they really partner with a lot of people and do a lot of good during the holidays. And, one of the things that I think, that I just wanted to mention too, that wasn't written here, is that are some of our partners, also all of Town Hall employees, that everyone participates in things with the Social Service Department. We have started something new, a new initiative that, with our, with our communication plan, and that is our Town of Farmington Fire Department News, and you all have a copy of it in your packet, and this is something that's going to be going out, and we also think that we, it's online now, but we'll probably do one per year as actually a hard copy. We still have found that people really still like to get the, give a hard copy newsletter. So there's a lot of good information in this Fire Department News, and this is, again, part of our communication strategy that we've been working on, to have our departments be communicating in a different way, in a different style with the public. And, lastly, our upcoming Town Council meetings, just, and for the public, January 28th is going to be our regular Town Council meeting, that's at 7:00 PM, and we're going to be doing a financial forecasting update. We're also at that time going to have a draft of the strategic plan, excuse me, and maybe CJ, you can speak to that part of the agenda?
Yes, we'll be working through our strategic plan, if you, anyone who wishes to see the strategic plan, it is on our website. We go through every year, and we reach out to all the Council members to review and look at the strategic plan and see if they have any additions that they can offer, bring them forward. All those additions, as well as any of the Town Manager hat, will be presented at the next meeting.
So the thought would be is that at the January 28th, a financial meeting, you will have a copy of a draft strategic plan. We will not be discussing it, but it will be in the agenda packet. So if you have any other items that are of interest, and it doesn't have to be worded, just topics or anything that you'd like included in the strategic plan, please make sure that you get it to me. And then between January 28th, and then our next meeting is on the 30th, we'll actually have the discussion of the strategic plan. So that will be January 30th. Then February 4th, as Chris had mentioned, is going to be Farmington High School Building Committee meeting, and that's on February 4th. And then we go back to our regular schedule on February 11th, our regular Town Council meeting, and then February 25th is our regular Town Council meeting. Just note that it starts at 6:00 PM, and that's going to be starting our budget season, that would be our capital budget improvement. And how that would work is that the Board of Education will start first, do their capital plan, then I will do my capital plan, my department heads will come in and talk to the Council at that time. Historically, we don't take any action on the capital plan, we just get a head start on it, because in March, then we'll act on the budget as a whole that includes the capital plan. So that is my Manager's Report. I don't know if you have any questions?
Any questions for the Town Manager? Move to approve Town Manager's Report?
I have, I make a motion to approve the Town Manager's Report.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? We'll move on to appointments.
Okay, bear with me here. Point of, on the first appointments through the corporate council, 1 through 8, are we going to...
Make a motion.
Or 1 through 5?
Make a motion and discussion.
Okay. I'll make a motion that on the appointments 1 through 5, that we have discussion on those appointments.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Kathy?
At this point, we're going to put those out to bid, so we'll take those under further consideration in the future.
So, usually how that would work is that we would set up probably in the next meeting or two, a subcommittee, these are appointments of the Town Council, so historically what that would be is probably two Town Council people and myself, and we would then solicit proposals, go out for an RFP, with the thought that you'd come back to the Council as a whole with a recommendation, again, for all our legal counsel, and those are items 1 through 5.
Now we move to, what are we looking to do now? To table this?
Yeah.
Is it pointing?
I'll make a motion that, I make a motion that we table line items L-1 through 5 to, to a future date.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next point?
Okay, this is, bear with me, yeah. Are we going to do the same thing here? No? Okay. I make a motion that, oh, okay, sorry, that Joe Swackey, Director of Finance and Administration, has served as Treasurer since July 2000. Oh, all right, got it.
Yeah.
That Joe Swackey be appointed as Treasurer from 2000. That Joe Swecki be appointed as treasurer from January 2020 until January 2022, and that the compensation for the treasury be set at $3,500 per year.
Second.
Joe has been our treasurer since July 2004, and the rate of compensation has been set at $3,500.
Any discussion?
What was the second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion passes.
Agenda item L. 7, that Julie Albert, Assistant to the Director of Finance and Administration, has served as Deputy Treasurer since July 1997. Yes, yeah, I got it. That Julie Albert be appointed as Deputy Treasurer from January 2020 until January 2022.
Second.
Julie has been our Assistant Finance Director, and since 1997, and she's served as the Deputy Treasurer since then, and there's no compensation with that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion passes.
L. 8, that the following banks and investment pools be designated as depositories for town funds. Bank of America, TD Bank, NA, People's Bank, People's United Bank, Santander Bank, Liberty Bank, US Bank and Trust, NA, Webster Bank, NA, JP Morgan Chase Bank, NA, Principal Financial Group, AKA Wells Fargo Bank, NA Institutional Retirement and Trust, State of Connecticut Short Term Investment Fund, and First Subfield Bank.
Second.
So many, as many of you know, that the Town Council has to appoint banks that we can put our money in, and there's certain requirements, so every two years that we list the banks that we are depositing funds in.
Any discussion?
I actually have a question. Has this list changed at all, as opposed to the last year or two?
Yes, yeah. It changes, and Joe, maybe you can explain why it changes?
Sure. There's a lot of, there's a lot of change that has been occurring in the banking industry. So, for example, Farmington Bank became People's United. So Liberty Bank acquired some of the banks that we used to do business with. They, I believe they acquired, what now? People's United acquired United Bank, which we used to do business with. Liberty Bank is a new bank that we brought on because we lost Liberty Bank. First Subfield Bank would be a new bank that we'd be bringing on because we've lost some other banks over the course of time. So every two years, we look at our, we have core banks, Stitt, Bank of America, Webster Bank, they're basically our core banks that we always did business with, but the other ones, they'll change based on who's being bought by who and whatnot. So, and most of the banks actually are truly depositories. We invest with them, not necessarily do banking business with them in terms of writing checks and checking accounts. Most of those banks are where we park, basically park idle cash for interest.
I'm just curious. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion passes.
Agenda item L. 9, that the following be appointed as members of or liaisons to the following entities or committees. Bicycle Advisory Committee, CJ Thomas. Board of Education, Chris Fagan. CROG Policy Board, CJ Thomas. Kathy Blonsky. CROG Transportation Board, Russ Arnold. Economic Development, Ed Generos. Farmington Village Center Committee, CJ Thomas. Brian Conley. Farmington Valley Health District, Kathy Blonsky. Green Efforts Committee, Chris Fagan. Historic District Commission, Brian Conley. Housing Authority, Gary Colombo. Human Relations Commission, Joey Capitofero. Land Acquisition, Peter Mastrow Batista. Brian Conley. Library Board, Gary Colombo. Stephen A. Fliss Scholarship, CJ Thomas. Town Planning and Zoning, Joe Capitofero. Yukon Communication, CJ Thomas. Unionville Historic District, Ed Generos. Unionville Village Improvement Association, Ed Generos. Water Pollution Control Authority, Joe Capitofero. Retirement Board, Peter Mastrow Batista.
Any discussion?
Just to let everyone know that there's a updated sheet on your places from the agenda, so we have what Peter just read.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion passes.
Bear with me again, I guess, if we, catch me if I'm wrong here, yeah. Appointments, L. 17, that Robert Brochue be appointed to the Retirement Board for a two-year term beginning immediately and ending January 2022.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion passes.
Agenda L. 25, that Joan Valente be appointed to the Retirement Board for a two-year term beginning immediately and ending January 2022.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion passes.
Agenda item L. 26, appointment to the Bicycle Advisory Committee. This is the correct. Okay. That Richard Mole be appointed to the Bicycle Advisory Committee beginning immediately for an indefinite term.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Did I leave anything out?
Nope.
Oh, okay. Oh, 18? Okay. Okay, got it. That, you ready?
Which one is it?
This is going to be L. 18. That Michael Zepka be appointed to the Retirement Board for a two-year term beginning immediately and ending January 2022.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion passes.
Yeah, I make a motion that, L. 12, that Mary Jean Parlow be appointed to the Farmington Valley Health District for the balance of a three-year term, beginning immediately and ending December 31st, 2022.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion passes.
I have four appointments that come for the Retirement Board, that the unions have their appointments. So the first one is L. 19, and that is Kyle Cunningham, that Kyle Cunningham be appointed to the Retirement Board for a two-year term beginning immediately and ending January 2022. He's the fire representative.
Second.
Actually, it's got to be the member of the council first and second. Peter will be the first, and then who's going to be the second?
Peter will make the motion.
You don't have to read it.
Second.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close.
So Paul, can I read the motion, or should I have Peter read it?
It doesn't matter.
Oh, okay.
You can read it, but Peter's got to be the first, somebody else has got to be the second.
Okay, so I'll read it.
Yeah, wait, just give it to me.
All right, sure. Easy.
L. 20, yeah, okay. Agenda item L. 20, that Steve Egan be appointed to the Retirement Board for a two-year term beginning immediately and ending January 2022.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion passes.
Agenda item L. 22, Robert Ingersson be appointed to the Retirement Board for a two-year term beginning immediately and ending January 2022.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion passes.
L. 24, that Jeff Porter be appointed to the Retirement Board for a two-year term beginning immediately and ending January 2022.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion passes.
Wow.
Good.
Very good.
I was glad I got through that.
I think you did pretty well. Very nice. Old business, we have known. Moving on to new business, considering taking action on the 2020 blighted building list.
Agenda item N. 1, the motion to consider and take action on the following blighted building list, 14 Blue Ridge Drive and 23 Lakeview Drive.
Second.
So we have a blighted building list, and under the town code, the council has 75 dates from the date of this list to approve, disapprove, or modify the list. Historically, the council has not usually acted on this until the February meeting. In the past, the council has maybe driven and looked at the properties and just to see. It's up to you if you want to continue that practice, and then next month it would be under old business and you to approve it. We do only have the two properties that are on the list. There's a pretty good detail about why they should still be on the list, so it's up to you if you want to approve the list now, or if you'd like to table the item and wait till next month to do it. I don't know if the council had an opportunity. One thing that is very positive, that since we've started the blighted building list many, many years ago, we used to have many lists, many properties on the list, and that's why I think the council is back to the practice of going around and looking at the properties. So it's up to you all if you'd like to table it and look at it next month, or if you're comfortable with approving it at this time.
Any discussion? Hearing done, we'll move to approve the budget just in a minute. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion passes.
Agenda item N. 2, to review and approve the attached capital improvement policy.
Second.
You have the capital improvement policy in your backup information. The policy states that you shall review the policy on a biannual basis during the month of January, every new Town Council. We last adopted the policy last January 2018. Joe and I don't see any need for any kind of changes. The next one, two, one, two, three, four items are our financial policies, just so everyone knows.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion passes.
Agenda item N. 3, to review and approve the attached debit, debit management policy.
Second.
This is our debt management policy, and it states, again, that we shall review it. We're not recommending any changes at this time.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion passes.
Agenda item N. 4, to review and approve the attached reserve policy.
Second.
This is our reserve policy, and again, at this point, we don't see the need to make any changes at this point in time.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion passes.
Agenda item N. 5, to review and approve the attached Employee Health Self-Insurance Fund Reserve Policy.
Second.
Again, this is, this is our Employee Health Self-Insurance Fund policy with the Board of Education, and I don't see at this time, we're not recommending any changes.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion passes.
Agenda item N. 6, to set a public hearing on February, February 25th, 2020 at 6:00 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers on the Town Manager's proposed seven-year capital improvement plan.
Second.
As I stated earlier, this is our public hearing on the capital budget, our seven-year capital budget, and as I stated, we start, we have our presentations between 6:00 and 6:30, then the Board of Education will present to the council, and then the town departments will come in next.
Any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion passes.
Oh, there was N. 7, okay.
This is N. 7.
Yep. To accept the, item N. 7, to accept the donation of $14,000 from the Farmington Fire Department Car Show Committee, consisting...
We've got a little next step. Is to award bid?
Yeah, you know what, we're, our agenda does not need...
It doesn't need anything.
Sorry, seven and eight, looks like they're going to, seven, eight, I'm confused.
Okay, so back up into N. 8 first, correct?
Call that N. 7.
Yeah, sorry about that.
This will be N. 7. Agenda item N. 7, to award bid number 294 Patterson Park Pump Station Upgrade. The BALT is our contractors of Ludlow, Massachusetts, at a total contract cost of $1,899,695.
Second.
The purpose of this motion is to award a contract to undertake the complete reconstruction of the sewer pump station located on Patterson Park Road. Bids for the project were opened on December 12th, 2019. The town received seven bids ranging from $1,492,000 to $2,285,000. Staff have reviewed the paperwork and references submitted by the three lowest bidders, and have determined that bidder two, BALT, contractors of Ludlow, Mass, submitted the lowest reasonable bid. This company has performed numerous sewer pump station upgrades. They've undertaken similar work in Connecticut with the towns of Mansfield and Pomford and the MDC. The Farmington Water Pollution Control Authority has reviewed the bids and also recommends that the award be made to BALT's contractors. I don't know if you have any questions, specific questions, but Russ Arnold, our town engineer, is in the audience and will be available to answer any questions.
Any questions? Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion passes.
Correct, this will be N. 7, N. 8, correct?
Yes.
Okay. To accept the donation of $14,000 from the Fire Department Car Show Committee, consisting of firefighters from Tuxess Hoes, Farmington East Farms, and Ava, for the purpose of building a rehabilitation pavilion at the live-fire training facility to be used during training evolutions.
Second.
This is a great donation from the Fire Department and from the Car Show Committee, and the pavilion will be a 16-by-24-foot structure, which will provide an area for firefighters to rest during the training, conduct pre-training briefings, and post-analysis discussions. Those will also serve as an outdoor training classroom, which will provide additional learning opportunities for our firefighters. This is already, it was part of the original plan for our fire training facility, and it's already gone through the TPZ. So I think this is really great, just for some histories, that our fire training facility was all donated by donations, and there was some things that we weren't able to do, and so it's really great that the Fire Department is still at $14,000, so we're able to do this. So that's a, it's a nice donation, and I guess the car showed it very, very well this year, and since 2014, that they've generated over $38,000 of proceeds for our town Farmington.
Any further discussion?
Please.
They had a great day, by the way. It was a tremendous car show, I think the most cars he ever has there. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion passes.
Agenda item N. 9, to set a public hearing for February 11th, 2020, to consider the purchase of property owned by William L. Wallenberg III and Paul A. Wallenberg, located at 8489 Meadow Road, approximately 11.38 acres, for a price of $108,000, subject to receipt of an acceptable Phase 1 environmental site assessment report, and subject to due diligence, including but not limited to title search.
Second.
This is going to be a public hearing at the next meeting, if the council sets that. At that time, the, there will be a formal presentation, and we'll go through the details. This is just the summary. I'll just go through a little bit of the note, but we'll hear more about it at the public hearing. It's that it's open space farmland, the property size is 11.38 acres, it's a flood zone area, it's farmland preservation, it's been on the land acquisition list since 2002, and the town appraisal was $110,000, and the acquisition cost is $108,000 with the life use. So again, how the process would be is that you'd set the public hearing tonight, and then at the February meeting, there will be the public hearing. That's that, you'd have the opportunity, a full presentation will be given to the council. At that time, you'll, the public will be able to talk on it, you will be able to ask questions. You, at that meeting, will make a referral, an 8-24 referral to the TPZ. All acquisition of land has to go to the TPZ for an 8-24 referral, so it goes to the TPZ. Then it will come back from the TPZ at the March 10th meeting, you'll receive that report, and it's anticipated at that March 10th meeting, you'll vote on the acquisition of the property.
Any discussion?
Just one comment, this will fill in the last piece of the puzzle for open space on the flats?
That's my understanding, yes.
Oh, that's good, okay. That's good, okay.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion passes.
Agenda item N. 10, to authorize town manager to execute a grant of conservation easement and restriction on 21 Pitaple Bridge Road. Tracy Stefanik grant order.
Second.
This easement will restrict the future cutting of any live trees within the easement area, including those recently replanted to repopulate the area on the ridgeline with trees. The easement is required by virtue of the town planning and zoning. The TPZ Commission decided to accept a replanting plan in the ridgeline protection area where trees were initially removed without permission. As a condition of the approval, the applicant offered in the TPZ accepted the easement. Acceptance implies that the referral requirements of the Section 8-24 of the Connecticut General Statute has been met. So this is, all easements have to be signed and authorized by the town council. This is an extra layer of protection, environmental protection in the ridgeline area, so the TPZ has, is recommending that this grant, this conservation easement, and that I sign the easement.
Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion passes.
Agenda item N. 11, to amend the appointments to the Farmington High School Building Committee as follows. Chris Fagan, town council member. Beth Kittner, Board of Education Liaison. Alicia Bowman, Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations. Catherine Krajewski, Assistant Town Manager. And Devon Alday, Clerk of the Committee.
Second.
Due to the recent municipal election, there are current members on the Farmington High School Committee that, that no longer serve in their elected capacity. The edits above represent those changes, but also give the building continued continuity among its members during a busy time in the committee's schedule. There's also been administrative changes among the non-voting members since the committee was charged in March of 2019, and those changes are reflected above.
Any question?
Just one quick question, Kathy. Does this impact the, the charge that we gave the building committee in terms of voting members and that sort of thing?
No.
No, it doesn't?
No.
Any other question? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion passes.
Agenda item N. 12, to amend the appointments to the Green Efforts Commission. The following changes are Christopher Fagan, Town Council Member, and Patricia Boy Williams, resident.
And I think...
The last one's down bold, yeah.
Yeah, I think you should, if you read all of them, I think that would be appropriate because there's new, there's a new member on it, too.
Oh, yeah, okay, all right, I'll take that for the top end.
Yeah.
Members to this subcommittee will be Christopher Fagan, Town Council Member, Patricia Boy Williams, resident, Jennifer Nguyen, resident, Andrea Sobinski, Board of Education Member, Kate Grady Benson, resident, Roger Phillips, resident, Stacy Petrazella, resident, Maureen Messier, resident, Joseph Barnes, resident. And non-voting members, Erica Robertson, Assistant Town Manager, and Shannon Rutherford, Assistant Town Planner.
Second. Question? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion passes.
Agenda item N. 13, to approve the following property tax refund as listed in front of you.
Second. Any questions? Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion passes. Executive session, we have none. I would like to leave you with a quote by Plato, "The beginning is the most important part of work." We have now begun. Now I will add your motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close.